She sounds sick enough to where she should be home. Um, which is fine. I mean, it's a good choice. Uh, you're right. I'd like to call this meeting to order a regular meeting of the village board on Monday, December 20th at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice and according to sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all village board members present except for trustee Miller and trustee Peeper, both who are excused. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Hitchens Institute of the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, legal, earthy, and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is President's Report. Not too much to report tonight besides, um, of course, it is the, uh, the Christmas holiday week and as we all gather together or work towards our plans to get together, uh, what just opportunity to wish everybody within Germantown and at the Village Hall, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, this is a time to reflect, a time to look back on the last year, you know, all the positives and negatives of that year and look forward to the following year to do a better job or to work a little bit harder to do a better job for all. But I think last year was a very successful year for, for everybody within the village, uh, even though it had a lot of, uh, a lot of pressures on it, whether it be, you know, through, through the health crisis or, uh, just through the normal budget prices. But for all those that are involved and all those within the village, uh, may I take this opportunity to say Merry Christmas and hopefully you'll have a joyous New Year. That's all I have for President's Report, so we can go on to announcements of forthcoming events, uh, public interest committee and department reports, starting with committee chairs with trustee Kaminsky.
President, just for the purposes of highlighting it, I see that trustee Miller has joined us on WebEx.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Jan.
Public Works will meet in this room on January 4th, Tuesday.
Thank you. Trustee Rick Miller.
General Government and Finance will meet on Monday, January 17th at 6:00 PM in this boardroom.
Thank you. Trustee Myers.
And Public Safety will meet on January 17th also.
Okay, here at the boardroom?
Yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports they'd like to bring up? Okay, now we can go on to the next item, which is citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There is no public hearing on tonight's agenda. If there is anyone that is joining us in our audience or via WebEx that would like to take this opportunity to come forward for citizen import and public appearance, all I would ask is you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record or make the person that is monitoring WebEx, uh, uh, be able to recognize you, uh, for this portion. Is there anyone wishing to come forward for citizen import or public appearance? Sir? And just, uh, so you, you know, uh, so people at home can hear you, try to speak as directly into the microphone as you can. Appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Troy Wetterell. I live at W-130 and 11414 Equine Trail. I'm here just to support the Zignago family in their efforts and their endeavor to, uh, rezone the land, uh, on the end of Forest Heights, uh, Drive. We'd like to welcome them to the village if, uh, you guys so desire.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming forward. Yes, sir. Trustee Baum.
Can I ask you where your property is in relationship to their property?
Uh, my wife and I and my family own, uh, just about 30 acres across Elm Lane to the southeast.
East.
Right across just south, just south of Zignago's, uh, region.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward for citizen import or public appearance at this time? Need you to go ahead, sir? Mm-hmm. You may. I would just like your name, uh, and such for the record, if you could, please.
Chad Johnson. Wayne Johnson is the landowner of about 100 acres on the very north end of the village of Germantown. I also own land, uh, Marcy Four, and my father owns it with me. We own about 6.62 acres on the north end of the village of Germantown, and I'm here to support the Zignago family on their rezoning of Item B. I just found out about this. Yes, sir.
Give me a relationship from the Zignago property to your property is, it sounds like you're...
I would say at least three miles of the crow flies northwest.
You're way north.
Yes, sir. Way on the north end of the village of Germantown.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishes to come forward at this time for citizen import or public appearance? Anyone else? Okay, then we can go on to the next item, which is consent agenda. But before I do that, I do have one communication that I received via email, and I would like to read in as part of this portion, uh, for the record. Uh, it was actually received today, and it says, hello, we read in our little Germantown paper and also we heard at the last board meeting that you approved $7,500 for a study to be done for a Tiff for County Line and Lanin Road site. Do you have something lined up there already to go into this area? Which well costs more for police and fire protection and whatever else. So then the cost will be passed on to the taxpayers and taxes due to the needs of improvements to these departments. Don't we have other needs to address first, such as last week when we went over to the strip mall on how, on Highway Q? Do you realize how many empty stores you have in the strip malls? We believe there are nine empty stores. How about working on getting some new stores to shop in, in the strip malls? Or what about what's going on with Main Street? Nothing has been said about that lately. Or housing for young families, housing that they can afford. Or fixing the cable audio system in the village hall. Hopefully by the time you read this letter at the meeting, the cable channel will be back on because it has been off since last Wednesday, 12:15, 21, before the storm. Please find a happy medium to these issues. And it's signed a bill in Carol Schneider, and they're located on Bayberry Circle in Germantown. That's the only communication that I received, uh, to be read into the record tonight, so then we can go to consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda A through O.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve consent agenda items A through O. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion. We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Baum. Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Okay. And that then takes us to new business, and we start with, uh, new business item A, which is a resolution 42-2021, appreciation of service to Janice Wick. Should I follow my own rules up here? Directly as, as you can, so that people at home can hear you. Thank you. All right. So we have a resolution 42-2021. Janice, could you come up here, please? Careful, watch your step. Thank you. And the resolution, uh, is for appreciation of service to Janice Wick. Whereas the village board members, the village employees and citizens would like to express their appreciation and gratitude to Janice Wick for her public service, contributions, and dedication while giving the village, given to the village while serving from October 1995 to January 2022. And whereas Janice served as an administrative assistant in the Public Works and Engineering Department during her 26 years with the village, and whereas in her career with Germantown, Janice has had to handle down trees, flooding, backed up sanitary sewers, water main breaks, garbage collection, misses, dead animals, labor issues, and how do I dispose of my television issues, to name a few. And whereas Janice has also had the opportunity to train approximately six village engineers, five directors of public works, who would not have been successful without her guidance. And now therefore be resolved that the village board does hereby acknowledge and dedication to the Germantown community that Janice Wick has shown during her service and wishes her well. And that's introduced today, uh, by myself and, uh, for the village board. So congratulations to Janice for, for your service. Now. Stand in ovation. And, and there is a reason for this. Janice has been here for as long as I've been here, and I remember, um, uh, her very welcoming nature when I first got on the board back in 2007, and how helpful she was with a lot of the questions, uh, that I had at that time, and also, uh, with her knowledge of the, uh, of the Public Works Department. Janice has been a mainstain there, and many, uh, residents that have called in with these issues that I listed have always talked to Janice. And every time that, uh, she's dealt with a resident and they've provided me feedback, she's always been positive, that she was very helpful, that she was very friendly, that she acknowledged my issue and was helped to get me, uh, some information or somebody there to take care of it. And it was never, uh, on the other side where they were ignored or, or shown any, any type of, uh, of negative, uh, customer service. Janice has worked hard for this village for many years and has, has resulted in, in a positive work ethic and a positive result for the village. She exudes customer service. She exudes friendliness, and for that, I appreciate your service, and you will be missed very much.
Thank you for the acknowledgement of all.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to say? Okay, great. We're gonna get this put more officially for you, and then we'll present it, or Steve will present it, uh, at one of your last days here, so thank you so much. Board, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second, somebody else.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Trustee Myers.
I would just like to echo some of the same comments that, that you made, Mr. President. I, I work for Monkey Public Schools, uh, for my employment as such, and the secretary in the school knew everything was going on. She knew Johnny was gonna come in at 10 o'clock and take his pills, and she'd have the pills there. Janice is the same way. Everything. Anybody had any problems, Janice knew it and took care of it.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? I didn't think so. Thank you. Next item under new business is Item B, ordinance 16-2021, the rezoning from the RS2 Single Family District and RS3 Single Family District to the RS1 Single Family District and A2 Agricultural Districts, conditional use permit 07-2021 to allow grading and filling on portions of a 25-foot wetland setback and three lots certified survey map for Robert Zignago, property owner of Lot 38 in Harvest Hill subdivision, and Michael and Pamela Matosak, property owners of North 116, West 13444 Elm Lane. To give us more information and background on this new business, Item B, we'll turn the meeting over to our associate planner, Emily Zant. Emily?
Thank you. So the purpose of these three applications is to create two lots, each buildable for a single-family dwelling and to enlarge the existing parcel, uh, which contains a, a single-family dwelling, uh, owned by the Maters, Maters Axe, uh, from 3.87 acres to, uh, 7.844 acres. It's the intent of Mr. Zignago to maintain ownership of and construct a single-family dwelling on proposed Lot 1, um, which is, uh, 24 and a half acres, and to sell proposed Lot 2, uh, 4.6, uh, acres as a buildable lot. The existing zoning on the site is RS2 and RS3 Single Family Residential. Uh, this property is located west of the Harvest Hill subdivision, north of Forest Drive. So on the screen you have the proposed, uh, CSM, the existing configuration on the left, and the proposed configuration on the right. And the proposed CSM includes Lot 1, which is a 24-acre parcel buildable for a single-family dwelling, and that's highlighted in blue. Uh, Lot 2 is a 5-acre build, a lot buildable for a single-family dwelling, highlighted in, in green. And then Lot 3, which is the, uh, lot with the existing single-family dwelling, uh, which will be enlarged to 7.78 acres, um, and highlighted in red. Access to Lot 1 and 2 will be off of Elm Lane, and there's a 30-foot ingress egress easement, uh, included on Lot 1 for the purposes of accessing Lot 2. Lot 3 will continue to take access off of Elm Lane. The proposed rezoning for this property, uh, Lot 1, highlighted in blue again, uh, is proposed to be rezoned to A2 Agricultural, and then, uh, Lots 2 and 3 are proposed to be rezoned to RS1 Single Family Residential. The conditional use permit, um, is part of Chapter 24 of the Shoreland Wetland Code, which requires an improved conditional use permit, uh, for encroachment into the 25-foot wetland, uh, setback. Um, the wetland was disturbed with the installation of the driveway that will eventually serve Lots 1 and 2. Um, the applicant did, however, receive proper permits from the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. A total of 5,732 square feet, um, was disturbed within the 25-foot wetland setback. Uh, the applicant has submitted a proposed mitigation plan, which includes a planting of a native seed mix along the edges of the driveway, and that detailed plan was included in your packet. So it was the Plan Commission's recommendation to approve the three lots certified survey map, uh, with two conditions, to approve the rezoning of, um, the property, um, as proposed, and then approve a conditional use permit to allow encroachment within the 25-foot setback, uh, subject to one condition. Have any questions for me?
Trustee Baum.
Are there any improprieties that have been done during this process? I, I've had several people call me this week, and this was not done right, that was not done right. Is there anything that is inappropriate with what has been done? The form was filled out improperly. The documentation is not correct. What was presented to the Plan Commission is inappropriate. Has everything been done correctly? Other than they built the driveway without a permit.
Um, the initial conditional use permit application didn't include, um, the full extent of the driveway, uh, that has been, um, revised and resubmitted, um, and that's what's before you today.
Other than that, everything else is okay. Everything has gone through DNR, everything else has gone through the Army Corps of Engineers. Everything else has been approved, accepted by all the people that need to. The only thing I understand is that you didn't pull a permit to build the driveway.
The permit was for the culvert, I believe. Um, there's no, and that was, that was pulled. Um, but there's no, um, there's not necessarily a permit to construct a driveway. The only, uh, issue is in this case it crossed wetlands and therefore needed the conditional use permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Further discussion? Trustee Myers.
Make a motion to approve new business B.
Attorney. We did a public hearing and, at the, uh, Plan Commission. Trustee Myers, can you state the motion again, please?
Uh, we, we went through this before, Mr. President. Do you want this, or there's, uh, there's one ordinance here, and there's a cup 07-2021. You want to, I would like to take both of those together if, if need be.
You could, you could do it however you want as the motion maker, and you can say that, uh, your motion encompasses all, or you could break them out per individual.
I would let's take them all at one time, which would be ordinance 16-2021 and cup 07-2021.
That's okay with the second. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? No further discussion? Trustee Jan Miller.
Thank you. Um, so the, um, owner started construction without the proper permits? Is that what I'm hearing?
Um, to answer your question, the, the driveway was put in without, uh, contacting the village and regarding the need of a conditional use permit because of the 25-foot wetland setback and what they were encroaching on in each of the, of the wetland setback areas. All other, um, requirements for the driveway were met within the, uh, requirement of the, uh, Department of Natural Resources, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the culvert that gets put, um, across the drainage ditch, uh, at the road, uh, where the driveway starts. So the only, um, thing that was missing was the conditional use, uh, process that allows and requires a public hearing, which was then, uh, re-followed up on and was done, uh, before Plan Commission. And, uh, so it was kind of playing catch-up in a sense of, of getting that taken care of, and that's what's before us tonight.
So are, are the, um, corrections going to be made on this property driveway through the wetlands?
There are no corrections to be made. Um, basically what, what is being presented is where it encroaches upon the wetland setback, and do we approve the, uh, the encroachment into the night 25-foot navigable, uh, of the wetland setback? Do we approve that as part of the conditional use process? And do we also approve of the rezoning, uh, as it's listed under new business item? That's what's before us tonight. So there, there's no correction needed. The driveway is in, and any amendment to what was, uh, submitted as part of that conditional use has been supplied. So
Thank you.
Everything has been met and, and is proper. Further discussion? No further discussion? We'll, um, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers. Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Could you repeat that, please?
Nay. No.
Thank you.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thanks. Thank you all for coming, for speaking. Mr. Zignago, uh, thank you for coming.
I think that was for all three items.
That's correct. Next item under new business is Item C, ordinance 17-2021, Village Germantown Flood Plane Zoning Ordinance, Amendment to Section 23 of the Germantown Municipal Code, and includes the adoption of the revised flood insurance rate maps and revised flood insurance study. Give us more information and background on this new business item. Again, we'll turn our meeting over to the Associate Planner, Emily Zant.
Thank you. Uh, the village of Germantown has been a participating community in the National Flood Insurance Program, uh, which is administered through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, uh, since 1974. In exchange for adopting and enforcing a flood plane management ordinance, uh, federally backed flood insurance and disaster relief is made available for residents and property owners within the village. Uh, one of the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program is that each time FEMA provide hazard information, uh, concerning land within the village of Germantown, the village must adopt, uh, set information and as well as the latest model flood plane ordinance, um, that was, uh, drafted by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. So we are presenting today an amended flood plane zoning code, which is Section 23 of the Germantown Municipal Code, a revised flood insurance, uh, study, revised flood insurance rate maps for consideration and adoption for the purposes of maintaining the village's eligibility, uh, within the National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, FEMA, FEMA has recently finalized, uh, updated flood insurance studies and updated flood insurance rate maps, uh, that were completed as a part of the Cedar Creek, uh, Risk Map Project in Washington County. This study, uh, details, um, included, detailed studies of 80 miles of stream, including Cedar Creek and 24 of its tributaries, um, and it has impacted five firm panels within the village of Germantown. Um, on your screen you can see the, uh, Cedar Creek watershed, um, outlined in red, and then the, uh, general line of the village of Germantown in yellow in the, on the bottom right-hand, um, corner of, uh, Washington County. So you can see the impacted, um, firm panels along the north side and, and the west side of the village. Um, the, these revised panels have been included in the packet for, for review. Uh, these panels and the, um, flood insurance study are, have been included by reference in the latest version of the Model Flood Plane Ordinance, prepared and recommended for adoption by the Wisconsin DNR. Adopting this revised ordinance as Chapter 23 of the Germantown Municipal Code, um, and the revised flood plane maps will, uh, by February 25th will ensure that the village's code meets the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program and that the village remains in good standing as a participating community. So the Plan Commission's recommendation was to approve the proposed flood plane zoning code amendment as drafted, which includes by reference the revised flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps, uh, have an effective date of February 25th, 2022. Any questions at this time?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 17-2021 as presented. Motion, motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Myers.
Um, Emily, the farther north, is that Pioneer Road?
Yep, the, the...
Further north, at the top.
Yep. Yep, that's Pioneer Road.
Thank you.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item under new business is Item D, Resolution 43-2021, the adoption of the 2021 through 2026 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. To give us more information and background on this new business, Item D, we have with us, uh, the Director of the Park and Rec Department, Gil Standridge. Gil?
Thank you. Good evening and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you.
Um, in your package, uh, hopefully you received the full plan of the 2021-26 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. So tonight I would like to try to, um, shorten it down as, uh, brief as possible, but give you an overview of what we're trying to accomplish with this plan. Uh, a little bit of background. Germantown first core plan was developed in 1990 and has been updated four times since. Park, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the department staff, and the GRIF team have been working on the, uh, plan update since early 2020 alongside with the village's comprehensive planning process, 2019 through 2021. The core plan will guide park and recreation management and park development for the next five-plus years, as well as allow the village to apply for grant funding from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. The purpose of the plan is to, uh, create and update inventory and evaluation of Germantown's existing parks, recent park improvements, and recreational trails. Bench, it allows for benchmark facilities and services to compare standards from other communities in the state and in the country. It helps us to identify the needs and the interests of the community related to active and passive outdoor recreation opportunities. And it provides a list of recommendations and priorities to assist the village with capital improvements, planning, and budgeting efforts related to parks and open space. capital improvements, planning, and budgeting efforts related to parks and open space. The Village of Germantown Parks and Recreation Space contains twelve sites, which are listed up here. Germantown has nineteen point six acres of park for every one thousand residents. However, that number may be skewed a little bit because it includes two hundred acres of Homestead Hollow Park, which is undeveloped and is also reasonably unknown to the majority of Germantown residents. So you take that away, and that decreases the amount of park acreage per resident. And according to the National Recreation Park Association, the benchmark that most town villages have is ten point one acres of parkland for every thousand residents. Germantown has two thousand fifty nine residents per park site as compared to one park site for every two thousand one hundred and eighty one residents nationwide. This whole process was done with the cooperation of the public engagement. There was community needs assessment. This was done three ways. Through the two thousand fifty Comprehensive Plan Community Service Survey, which was done in two thousand nineteen, a park planning open house in October two thousand nineteen, where inspiration boards, interactive mapping, and live digital polling was used. And the third was the virtual public stakeholders meeting, October twentieth, with sports groups, community organizations, and families. Results of these, in the two thousand fifty community survey, the top park amenities were trails, concessions and beer garden, outdoor aquatic center, and a canoe kayak launching area. From this survey, seventy three percent of Germantown residents said there is enough active recreation land, and forty six percent said Germantown could use more passive recreation land. In the park planning open house, however, sixty four percent said Germantown did not have enough active recreation land, and eighty six percent said Germantown did not have enough passive recreation land. And at the stakeholder meeting, focus areas were youth sports complex, a beer garden, canoe kayak launch, trails, restrooms, outdoor aquatic experience, and also discussed was a village center, park, plaza, and community center. Okay, and the local priorities for trails and connections, local priorities are the Menominee River Corridor, shared use paths that connects parks, and on-road enhancements. I wanted to share with you that, as you can see here, some of the type of bike lanes and paved shoulder lanes that the public would like to see. So the core priority goals and objectives is to explore the feasibility of developing an outdoor aquatic experience, aquatic center splash pad, and a two twenty twenty one CIP budget item. Two was to pursue an outdoor sports complex feasibility study that identifies a potential location and design for active recreation. Three, identify and acquire recreational lands with an emphasis on the Menominee River Corridor and future trail plan implementation. Four, park master plan, Freedom Field Park for future redevelopment opportunities. And five, work with public and private agencies to obtain access to the Menominee River Trail, preservation of prime environmental corridors, and create linear park and trail systems. So tonight, I'm approaching the board and asking them to adopt the twenty twenty one through twenty twenty six Comprehensive Outdoor Plan, Resolution forty three, so that the village and the Parks Department can forward the plan to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for review and acceptance to ensure that the village is eligible to apply for grants in the spring of twenty twenty two. Portions of the core will also be included in and formally adopted as a park and recreation component of the overall two thousand fifty Comprehensive Plan.
Questions? Trustee Myers.
Motion to approve letter D, new business, sorry.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. Trustee Myers.
Doing some of the numbers, and it looked like we have eight billion three hundred and ten thousand dollars for the five years total program in money costs that you've come up with. But there's a lot of state programs, as you talked about, that can can reduce these costs in big time. Some of it, some of it entirely, sometimes it's fifty fifty deal. Be interesting to see as we go forward. Thank you.
I have a question. In the beginning of your of your presentation, you had stated a figure of national average is like ten point one acres of parkland per thousand residents? And what was it Germantown, were we higher or lower than that national average?
Currently, we are considered higher at nineteen point six. But in that study, they included the two hundred acres of the Homestead Hollow Park, which is Wilderness Park, my fault, I'm sorry, and also the Little League Ballpark as well.
Okay, if we take that out, are we then closer to the national average?
Yes, sir, we would be much closer to the national average.
Oh, are we still above, closer but still above, or closer but below?
We're probably still be closer, maybe a little bit above.
Okay, thank you. Discussion.
President Walter.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Thank you. I don't know what page this is of your report, Gil, but on page two fifty nine of our packet, in the second paragraph, it says under sixty two twenty three, in parentheses, three, plan commission is blah, blah, blah. And then at the end, it says to apply for grants in spring of two thousand two. Do you mean two thousand twenty two?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Will be, will there be other in-person outdoor recreation plans, gatherings for residents in the future?
I would see that as we move forward with the feasibility study. I would, yes, definitely plan to conduct some more public hearings and get in public involvement.
Thank you.
Further discussion, trustee Kaminsky.
Essentially, this, this is a something we have to do so we can qualify for grants, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I think it's great to be looking forward like this. I think it is, it's something we should be doing, and I have no problem with this. I just know that a lot of it is more or less a dreamscape that we may get there, we may not, depending upon funding, but that's up to you to figure out, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
But it does provide that
Template.
Guide.
I like it.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Gil.
Thank you. Merry Christmas again.
Thank you, same to you.
Merry Christmas.
Next item under new business is item E, Resolution forty four dash twenty twenty one, the jurisdictional transfer of County Trunk Highway F, which is Freistadt Road and Wasaki Road. Give us more information on this new business item. We'll again turn the meeting over to our Associate Planner. Gil? Oh, this goes to the Village Administrator, Mr. Cracklaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item that you have before you tonight is a transfer of jurisdictional authority between the Village of Germantown and Washington County. If this is approved by the Village Board and the County Board, Germantown would take on ownership and responsibility of Freistadt Road from Wasaki Road to Fond du Lac, and the county would take over responsibility and ownership of Wasaki Road from Freistadt Road to Mequon Road. There are several reasons why I'm recommending that the Village Board approve this this evening. One is operational efficiencies, looking at both public works operations for plowing and maintenance. Freistadt would be a fairly efficient addition to our operations for snow and ice control and other activities. We do frequently have have trucks and crews that are going up and down Freistadt on a regular basis, so it would not greatly increase the the level of effort to maintain Freistadt. And the same is true for the county along Wasaki Road. In addition, making this transfer would provide some opportunities for the village for the redesign, upcoming redesign and reconstruction of Freistadt Road. Freistadt Road is, as you're probably all well aware, that's and the portion that's maintained by the county is nearing the end of its useful life. It's in the county's capital improvement plan for reconstruction in twenty twenty five. However, the the county, when they're looking at reconstruction, typically looks to reconstruct highways focused more on vehicle traffic and following standards that's more consistent with rural county highways. As there's been additional development along Freistadt Road, the Harvest Hills, and other developments just to the south of Freistadt Road, more residents and more pedestrian and bicycle traffic towards the schools to the west of those developments, as well as as our parks. There are some opportunities to potentially add some recreational trails consistent with the court plan that that the board just adopted, or sidewalks, opportunities for residents to utilize those. If this transfer is approved, the county would make a cash payment towards that reconstruction of six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. That's calculated based on two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per mile of highway. We did net out thirty thousand dollars that that we would for Wasaki, since that was recently repaved, there's much longer period before that would have to be replaced. In addition to that, the, under the state levy limit statutes, the levy related to the maintenance of those two highways would transfer, the levy transferring to the Village of Germantown estimate would be about twenty thousand dollars per year. The the village would also receive the state transportation aids for those highways, which I don't have a solid estimate on that, but I believe when we transferred Goldendale, it ended up being another twenty five or thirty five thousand dollars a year towards towards operations and maintenance. So as a result of those factors, recommending approval of the jurisdiction transfer, and happy to answer any questions, my dear.
Board?
Make a motion to approve Resolution forty four dash twenty twenty one for discussion.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. Trustee Baum.
Freistadt Road is slated to be reconstructed? And the county is going to pay for all of the reconstruction? Or is the village going to pay for the reconstruction?
The Freistadt Road is is in the, as owned by the county, is currently in their capital improvements plan for twenty twenty five for reconstruction. If this transfer is approved, the county would transfer along with that six hundred and thirty five thousand dollars that the village board could use towards the reconstruction of the road.
And the reconstruction format is just to rebuild the road, but no additional bike paths or roundabouts?
The county calculations includes things like culverts, retaining walls, et cetera, but they do not, they do not build recreational trails or bike paths.
Okay.
There are, and this is, there are opportunities in in the initial conversations that we've had. Believe that there are some very positive opportunities for grants for recreational trails, seeing as how this connects neighborhood communities to both schools, parks, workplaces, et cetera. So this is a project that likely would result in in significant grants that we could use towards recreational trails or bike paths.
Before we agree to accept this transition, should we not understand whether we can or cannot get these grants?
We wouldn't be eligible to apply for the grants if we don't, if we don't have jurisdiction over the roads.
Okay, let me divert to Wasaki Road.
Yes.
Same questions on Wasaki Road. You talked about them repaving Wasaki Road.
No, we repaved Wasaki Road.
From where to where?
From Mequon Road north.
To Freistadt.
To Freistadt.
And Freistadt to a quarter mile north of Highland Road is being reconstructed this coming year?
Yes.
Twenty twenty two?
Right.
And that is being reconstructed just as a road, no bike paths, no nothing else?
Is it correct?
So we are going to give them a newly constructed road for us to take a dilapidated road that we have to reconstruct with no bike paths?
And we get the money to reconstruct it.
Is that enough money to build the road and the bike paths? No, it's just enough money to build the road? Is that?
Possibly, you would have to look at.
That's why I'm asking, is there enough money to build the road? Because I don't want to spend any more money.
The county says it is. It's based on the same calculation we use for for Goldendale Avenue, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per mile. That's the average cost that the county pays for reconstruction. It's consistent with what our costs are for repaving projects in the Village of Germantown. So I would say, yes, it is enough money to to reconstruct, to repave the road. I think it is, and depending upon the configuration that that we ultimately would choose, if it's, if it's a paved shoulder with a bike lane, that's a much smaller increase to the amount of funding that's necessary than if we have a separate path that's off.
Eight feet away from the road.
An expensive proposition, and I think to some extent that design would probably depend on what we're able to get in terms of grants and what might be available.
And give me again the length of Freistadt Road is from Wasaki to where?
From, it's two point six six miles from Wasaki Road to Fond du Lac. And we would get, we would be receiving that, the county would be taking one mile of Wasaki from Mequon to Freistadt.
Okay, and the Freistadt and Fond du Lac Avenue intersection was recently the topic of signs to turn that into a roundabout?
On the state highway?
Yes.
And that is a state highway? The state would have to determine whether roundabout would be needed or wanted or funded.
And how does one go about having the state validate during this reconstruction that that should be turned into a roundabout or not?
That would not be part of the Freistadt reconstruction. That would be a separate project that the, we would have to approach the state on.
And if I'm rebuilding a road instead of rebuilding the intersection twice, I would like to understand whether that intersection should I would like to understand whether that intersection should be upgraded before I build the road.
You're on Fond du Lac and Freistadt? Or where are you?
One forty-five.
Yes.
And Freistadt Road.
All right, I just wanted to know exactly where you were.
Okay.
Am I on the wrong, is that, that's not?
Oh, that's right, and I've seen the signs there too, I know.
Right.
Yeah, and nobody has called me with the signs up there, so.
They have it on, um, on that, uh, the, uh, social media, uh, next door. There's a lot of comments about that on there.
I, I'm not a social media person, so I haven't seen those. I'll have to go out and look.
The state has been looking at some of the intersections on one forty-five. Uh, if the board would like more detail on that, I think the public works director is more familiar with that than I am. But they have been looking at, at some of the intersections, um, and, uh, is planning, uh, improvements to, I believe, the, the intersection on Fond du Lac and Division. I don't know to what extent they've looked at Fond du Lac and Freistadt yet, though.
Larry is coming to the podium, so I think I'll defer to Larry for a few minutes.
Well, he's walking up, can you think, what did we call, what did we pay to redo the mile or whatever that we're transferring out, uh, on Wazaki? What, what was the cost of that?
No, you're really testing my memory. That was part of the, um, program. I think that was just around or under three hundred thousand dollars.
Just for that mile or for the whole thing?
Um, the whole thing, but just remember too, Wazaki Road is a borderline road. We had an agreement with Mequon Road that we would maintain both sides of that, and they took Mequon South, um, for that. So, um, we really don't have jurisdiction over all of that road. When the county takes that over, they're actually getting an agreement from us and, um, Mequon to take over that road. I, I, I could be overspeaking on that because all we did was we pulverized that, replaced a couple culverts, and that's really all we did to, to Wazaki Road to re, repave it. It wasn't a major reconstruction at all.
He was here to answer a question of yours.
You're talking about roundabouts?
Yes.
So for any roundabout to happen, my understanding is the, the state would, would, um, want a traffic analysis done, they also review accident reports, um, they look at dangerous intersections. So currently, the, the intersection's up for rebuild is the intersection of Division Road, Highway G and, um, one forty-five. I actually have a preliminary plan for that, that's going to be designed as a roundabout. And that's because they've tried, the state has said they've tried other aspects of making that intersection safer. They've reflected, put reflective elements on the poles and tried different signs, and they still see the accident rate. They deem that as one of the most dangerous intersections in this area of the state.
Give me a landmark, what's, what's theirs?
DPW site?
By the Public Works Building.
That intersection, that's going to be a roundabout.
That is more dangerous than Freistadt.
That's what they're telling us.
That was, has been my comment, there haven't been enough accidents at Freistadt, they're more dangerous stuff.
When they talk to us about that, we say, why don't you go, why don't you go and look at Maple and, and Holy Hill and one forty-five, and maybe look at that intersection first. But they, they, they've highlighted this intersection, they already have a plan out for it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Trustee Rick Miller.
All right, I have a vested interest in this road since I've lived on it for twenty-one years. Yeah, I, I looked at this and I actually, um, researched some stuff at the county, and you probably have more current information, but in their twenty-fifty plan, Freistadt or Highway F was, uh, scheduled for repaving next year. Repaving, not redoing, repaving, resurfacing. Uh, in their twenty-nineteen Bike and Trail Network Plan, County F is slated for an on-street paved shoulder with bike packs, bike pass signs when repaving occurs. So if those mesh up, I can't confirm that, but if those mesh up, that was supposed to happen last year. So now Steve, you're saying that twenty-twenty-five is the year that they were expected to do that?
That's the, uh, that was the information provided us by the county, that, that the, uh, road was in their, uh, five-year, their capital plan for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so the reason that, that the county wants to do this is that you have to have a county highway, either match up to another county highway or a state highway. And County M stops at Wazaki and Freistadt Road, County F takes it to one forty-five and it's a loop. County M then would go to, to, uh, Mequon Road and complete that down to Highway one sixty-seven. I'm sure that's, that's why they want it. I'm having a hard time with giving up a mile of road where we have half jurisdiction for two point six-six miles of road that we take over. And although they're giving us some money for this, we have to maintain it in perpetuity after that. And our biggest budget item right now is roads. We borrow one point five million dollars a year to maintain our roads. And now we're going to add another one point six-six miles to our road system just because the county wants to get rid of it. I'm not real happy with this, and you'd think that I would want to live on, on a village road instead of a county road, but I'm looking at the dollars here going, I don't see it.
Further discussion, trustee Myers.
I was going to say, Larry, you, you, you're almost on the money with that three hundred thousand dollars. Plus, we also, because of, of the size of, of Germantown and West Bend, we also got fifty-five thousand dollars also as a credit. We'd have paid upfront per se, um, so that has reduced that particular cost. In regard to being a former county supervisor, this happens all the time, Rick, in regard to this. These roads, they put them up there and then they have a, the county's got a, a safety committee, and they actually go through that more than they go through the, uh, the rest of it. And the process of it, what transpires is they're constantly looking at all the accidents on, on the different roads, and then they prioritize them and change them. That's why it changes all the time. I believe from, from the last time that I talked to, to the highway commissioner, basically speaking, and, and that's two years ago, a year and a half ago, excuse me, he actually thought that that road was good for seven more years. And then on top of that, they could have, uh, uh, put the kind of surface that they put on, on Pilgrim, you know, from, uh, from, uh, Mequon, uh, all the way to, um, Reverie or whatever it was. No, actually, just, just before County Lane Road. And they put that surface on, and that surface is good for another six years after that. So you could get another fourteen years off of that before we'd have to spend any money in the process of that. That's my opinion in regard to it. In regard to Steve, what you talked about before, getting from the state, increasing, uh, the road like we had for Goldendale and such. I think in January of, of, uh, next year, we'll get our first payment from the state in regards to roads. But it's, it's a lot higher than, did you say thirty-five thousand is your guess?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I think that's.
I think it's close to sixty thousand, to be honest with you. And if we end up taking that particular road, because if I remember right, when we took Goldendale, wasn't that point, uh, three, uh, close to three miles?
I think it was like three point one, just a little bit over three miles.
And so this one is two point six-six, I believe as such. So, uh, we may end up getting the same amount, uh, that additional amount each year also and such. I, I mean, I believe I, I think I'm going to be in favor of this myself in regard to the facts that I actually know for certain. Thank you.
Further discussion, trustee Kaminsky.
I have a question. I mean, has anybody ever refused the county when they ask for a trade-off like this?
Uh, yeah, they, they have talked about other roads within Germantown. I think, uh, this particular road, because of the development and because of, i- i- it is in both the county and the, the village, uh, uh, trail plan. But because of that factor, I, I think it is a, a little bit different situation.
I think it would really be helpful for us to have control of Freistadt, particularly as we continue to go west on it. I mean, to really, with everything that might be happening up there. Do they always stick with the one price? Like they give you a price tag and they say this is what you're going to get? Or is it negotiable to the point where you could go back and say there was discussion about are the trails included in that like they were, as Rick saw in his research? Is that something we could go back and ask about and see if we can get another sixty, hundred thousand dollars?
You want seven hundred?
This is, we did, we actually did that with Goldendale, where initially they came in, and I can't remember if initially it was two hundred or two twenty-five. But we did increase that to two fifty. It wasn't directly related to the trails. We did talk to the county highway commissioner about trails. He did mention that, that they, they will, uh, uh, if it's part of the plan, do a, uh, a paved shoulder, but that is as far as, as they would go in there. I don't recall the width of it, but, but relatively narrow. So we, we certainly, we could take this back and, and try to get that bumped up. It never hurts to ask. I, I'm not optimistic that it would go much higher than, than two fifty.
I, I, I would personally not mind it going back for an ask, though. I mean, just to see with our concern about connecting that particular road with, um, their, their county park, actually, eventually. After it goes past all the schools and everything, I mean, it would be quite the connector to, to have that done. I mean, if it doesn't hurt to ask, and if nobody's in any hurry, I would say, let's ask.
I'd agree.
Explain our concerns.
Why not? I agree.
Further discussion, trustee Myers.
It'd be a ninety-ten, correct?
My other points. Further discussion. Go ahead, trustee Jan Miller.
Thank you. Uh, uh, it's a comment. I think that we should go back to the county. They spent money, uh, to work on, uh, trail connectors, bike trails, through the village of Germantown, and they spent a lot of money doing it, and they know how important it is. So I think we should go back to the county and see if they can't throw in bike, if, if we continue to go forward with this Freistadt thing. And, um, lastly, uh, please make sure your microphones are on when you speak. Thank you.
I think Dennis, you're talking this way and your microphone's behind you, so they might have a little trouble hearing you. The only comment I would make is, um, somewhat along the lines of, of what trustee Rick Miller was saying. And this, this is a good deal for the county and not so much of a good deal for us. If, if you're looking at it on its surface, we're taking a road that we already paved and paid for and getting a road that needs repair longer. So we gave up a mile, whatever, of nice new road, or newer. And now we're getting a road that in seven years, we'll have to put at least a million and a half dollars in, if you even add additional bike paths on it. And the county's been doing this lately, uh, for whatever reason, because it's making a lot of monetary sense to them, and then coming in and bragging on how much money they're saving everybody. All they're doing is they're transferring it to the municipality. Uh, they're taking it off of their books and they're putting it on ours. And then they pat themselves on the back and say, look, we're cutting our budgets. You look how good we are. Well, sure, and here we sit here and struggle and try to pay for the road that we took on, uh, within the next five to seven years. So that's where I have a little bit of a trouble with it. I, I like the idea of control of this road and, uh, the continuity that it provides on some of the bike paths that are coming down off of Holy Hill Road and, uh, Goldendale and kind of down around one forty-five that we started and put money towards with that TIF. So, you know, that's where I, I ride that fence. I, I, I don't like the idea of, and, and believe me, and we work with the county all the time, but it seems that they're, they're kind of, you know, giving us the short end of a stick. And it's not the first time. And they've looked at this for years, like you said, Dennis, and they've got it all worked out. And believe me, they've got it worked out to their advantage. And they're really passing a buck down to us in a sense. And it kind of gets tiresome as you see it over the years. Uh, I hope that changes. I, I hope that we're able to, to do something productively with this, uh, and it doesn't, uh, come to a, a fact where we have to do it in the next, call it, three to five years. Cause I think it'll be expensive. Once you start digging into that road like any road, uh, it becomes more. And I'd, I'd really like to see where they get their numbers based off of six ninety-five. So, uh, yeah, I would like to go back to them and see what else, what else you got. How much of a need is this for you? How much are you willing to chip in extra to make this happen for the county? So that we can get something out of it as well, which, uh, would be, um, connectivity of the paths that we're already planning. But you would need to do a, uh, amendment to do that. Right now, we have a motion to approve.
Amendment to send it back?
To renegotiate cost, yeah. Cause if you approve it, it proves it as presented.
I'll make motion to, what did you just say?
Motion to amend?
Motion to amend to send it back to the county for reconsideration.
For recon, well, you're sending it back to the county for, for additional funds. So right now, they're giving us six ninety-five and we're seeing if there's more available for bike paths? You want to put a number on that, or you just want to leave it at what can you negotiate?
Leave it open.
More.
Yeah.
I kept the letters more.
I'll second that.
Motion made to amend and seconded, discussion, village administrator.
I was gonna, uh, just suggest, or if you would like to, um, and I'm not the parliamentarian here, but, um, uh, just table this until, uh, it, give me the direction to go back and, and discuss with the, the county, the potential to, uh, get some additional funding and bring it back in, in January.
I will.
Withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion, and I will make the motion to allow you to, to table this and allow staff to go back to the county and renegotiate.
Okay, motion is to table.
Motion is to table.
Motion needs a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, no discussion when it's a motion to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. We don't need to go back to the regular motion because the motion's been made to table. So that would then bring us to new business item F, request to use remaining funds toward the two thousand twenty-two annual road improvement program. We got to bring us information on this.
Mr. President?
Yes, trustee Myers.
I am the one who brought this, uh, forward to the board.
To the public works committee?
Public works first, and then the public works, uh, brought it to the full board for discussion and the possible improvement. Basically speaking, for some of the new trustees, um, what transpired in regard, talking about this a moment ago, um, was there was a, a, a lot of money that we got from the county. And the, uh, our administrator gave us three different proposals in regard to what could be done with that money after the fact. I had made the suggestion, and Terry had agreed, if she remembers or not, but, um, that we would take that money and, and go forward with that for roads. But the only thing that wasn't put in there was what year would be, put that money in for roads. And so it's been sitting there. And we did, uh, use a hundred thousand of the total amount, which is not the amount that you're looking at, that was put in to actually redo the intersection of Freistadt and Goldendale, so trucks could get through that. And then a hundred thousand, correct me, Steve, was used in the budget this year for roads also. So these, this is the remainder amount that we have in here as such. I'd like to see that be used for the roads for this particular year. I, I, I know that I had talked to Larry, and he said that Larry was talking with Matthew in regard to just how much money, um, we have left over from different roads, keeping in mind that we want to do Sentry and Lover's Lane this year. And, uh, we are also doing Over, Over by, uh, Rick, a country era. And so that amount of money has not been determined as such. Larry had mentioned that he could put, put in what he. Larry had mentioned that he could put in what he's done in other years, would be alternative bids, so we could get some of these roads. What I was asking for and mentioned to Larry was if there was a possibility in regard to any money left over, I'd like to see, as long as we're doing Country Air, that we'd end up doing Pleasant Lane also with that extra money. And then do any other further money that would be available. According to Larry, we would come up with a plan. But I wanted to see Pleasant Road be done because that's a particular road that I think is a three, as far as I'm concerned. But if anybody has any additional questions, that'd be fine.
District, are all these roads in?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Not mine.
Trustee Kaminsky, a question?
A comment on this. I do agree it should be used for roads. We discussed this a couple of months ago, as I recall, at this meeting. However, I don't know if we can chain it to 2022 necessarily, because we don't know the scope of the roads projects, how much can actually be accomplished, competitive bidding with the firms that are doing this. You could only get so much done in the window that we have, weather-wise in Wisconsin. And I think maybe we can use it, but I like the idea of using it for Country Air. But do we want to do that in 2022 when all the construction traffic is still going to be going up and down Country Air as that development continues to spread out? I mean, they're just beginning their second phase right now. And so I would like to see that money saved for roads. In particular, I'd love to see that money used for Country Air if it would cover the costs, which I'm not sure it would. Because that is going to be a big-ticket item when the time comes.
Director Radicek?
I just anticipated questions. Country Air Drive is one that I approached Administrator Kukulon early this year during budget time. Because this is the year we're up to propose a road to the state-county for an LRP road, local improvement road. And I thought, we looked at Country Air, and since I've started here, I think every year I've heard several comments from different trustees at the time that the road is just terrible to drive on. I would like to apply for that road to the LRP funding. We're going to get, I think it's $63,000 or $65,000 this year from that grant towards a road. The roads have to meet certain qualifications, traffic, traffic volume and things like that, and destinations. And I think with that funding and with the leftover money from the Goldendale Road project, I believe we could do Goldendale. We could do Country Air Drive this year, 2022.
So you would do it in 2022 despite the construction traffic?
The construction traffic, are you referring to Renwood North? That's all coming off of Freystaff.
So nothing will be coming up Country Air?
Very little, yeah. I was out there last week doing a borings for traffic, and there was very little traffic for construction on there.
And I would definitely do it. That road's terrible.
Most of Renwood South, the houses most in there are built. All you're having is basically contractors, carpenters coming in out with vans and pickup trucks.
So I got it straight in my mind. There's roughly $592,250 remaining.
Well, there's actually 100,000 was taken either put into the budget for roads this year, so actually that whole amount would be in there.
Right. We started at 692, and we took out 100,000, so it leaves us like 592 and change. And you're, you know, I'm hearing two things here. I'm hearing, everyone seems to agree on the road, but I've heard two different ways of how we're funding it. One is that you're going to be looking to get state funds for it. And other things that I've heard is we're looking to use this money for it. So what's achievable? I mean, if you make a pitch to the state, that's a possibility and not a for sure?
It's a pretty for sure, as long as the road meets the qualifications. We've received money the last, it's every other year, we've received money. First of all, was for Wasaki Road, and then a year ago, it was for Holy Hill Road. We used the money for Holy Hill Road between Goldendale and, what's the East Leamons Division? And so now we're up again for nominating another road, and these roads meet, we know what the requirements are, and we meet those requirements. The problem with that is you just have to pay upfront, and you don't get your money back until the road is closed. And we just make sure we keep up with the pay requests and get it closed real quick at the end of the year and make sure the contractor gets his invoices into us. That way, we get refunded. Now, we're waiting for our refund for Holy Hill Road. We should be getting a check at the end of the month or beginning of January yet. So I think with that money and what we have available from the Goldendale Road project, Goldendale Transfer, we can rebuild Country Air Road.
From Mequon to Freystaff?
It's going to be just a pulverizing, some minor repairs. The road is really not in bad shape structurally. It just has the ride, the ride is terrible with all the joints. There's a few failure spots on the west side by those wet areas. It's not huge. So anticipate the road is mostly just a pulverizing and grade and pave.
Okay. Trustee Rick Miller?
Yeah, one question on those funds from the state. That's, what amount are we looking at for that?
I think it's, I can't remember what Eli or engineer told us. It's either 63,000 or $65,000 this time. It's been going up a little bit every year.
Compared to what's needed for that road?
Yes, it's just, it's just something, you have to have a road that meets certain criteria to apply for it, and you just, that's... The state gives so much money to municipalities, you have to have over 20,000 population. So in Washington County, it's West Bend and Germantown, and West Bend, and it's divvied out by population, so West Bend gets more than us.
I tend to agree with some of the discussion here that I do not want to divert funds that were used or, you know, earmarked for roads, because that's where, how we received it for some other project. I mean, I think it should stay with the roads on this. I think Country Air is a fantastic one to do if we can do it with these funds. What about Pheasant Lane? I know that trustee Myers was asking about that, that, you know, the small road just off of Country Air.
It could be done at the same time. It's not in our 2022 road program. It could be done at the same time. It doesn't have to be. We always come and do roads and blend into a previously paved project. It could be done, it's just...
But that's something we'd have to...
We may have to change a road. Yeah, I could do it as an alternate bid, and if we, I'd always bid out like two alternate bid roads in case the bid's coming low, so that we can squeeze another road in if the bid's coming low enough.
And when you say 692, it's because we have 100,000 in the budget, and that would be used for roads for next year. So it would be the total of 692.
It's all earmarked for roads.
100,000 was already part of the budget.
Correct.
Trustee Myers?
Basically speaking, as I mentioned to the board, as I mentioned to the board before, you're working with Matthew trying to ascertain the amount of money that's left over from the funds. As an example, which we actually did at Lover's Lane last year, from Fond du Lac to Maple. And so that was, that was close to, I think, $225,000 for that. But there's more money that is available that has not been identified totally yet, correct?
Correct. Well, Lover's Lane took the spot of Lover's and Century Lane. I, because we couldn't do Lover's and Century Lane, I slid Lover's Lane in there. That was supposed to be done this coming year. So we just jumped that one forward because Lover's and Century could not get done due to property acquisition situation. So that's where that came from.
Okay. Thanks for explaining. The other thing...
We are still trying to find, we're still trying to locate and, you know, determine the funds. Because there's $102,000 from escrow money from Harvest Hills and Woodland Ponds Estates that will go towards Elm Lane. And when that comes in, that decreases our cost from this year out of our 1.5 million. So it's just playing the bookkeeping side right now.
Yeah. And as you talked about, Pleasant Lane could be put in as an alternative, per se. If the money's there, and if the money isn't there, then it's not be, not applying, so. Terry, on the same situation we have, we're always going to have the same situation every year, not knowing just exactly how much we can get, or how much is going to be left over. I'd just like to designate for that particular money for roads, and if we don't have the money, or it's used, then it's used up and been done with it. I'd just like to see it be used up this year.
Board? Trustee Baum?
Trustee Myers, can you clarify that? The money that is allocated for roads dedicated to Goldendale, you wish to make sure it gets used for roads?
That's already been approved by the board at that period of time, the people who were on the board at that time.
That's what I'm not understanding. It's already dedicated for roadwork?
We didn't designate what year to have it used. That's what I'm doing this evening.
You want it dedicated for roads this year?
Right.
And...
Is that offset borrowing?
Well, the follow-up question is, the amount of money we can get from the state is only $65,000 for Country Air?
That's from the local road improvement program. That's just the program. That's all they'll give us.
So that's all we can get. So we're not paying for this road through state funds. We're only paying for it, we're basically moving money from one road to another. And then when is the original road supposed to be reconstructed for the balance of it? The money, we're taking money from one road and putting it to Goldendale.
You're taking it from the transference of Goldendale to us?
Okay, so...
The money the county gave us for Goldendale Road?
They gave it to us to finish the work on Goldendale.
No. Just to transfer it over. Then we would have the same responsibility as we're talking about earlier this evening in regard to Freystaff.
So, but my understanding is they gave us the road and gave us money to repair the road?
Well, future repairs.
Yeah, they gave us the money basically calculating that at some point in the future, the Goldendale will have to be repaved. And just like the calculation that we talked about in the former, the previous item with Freystaff, they calculated what they would budget in order to repave the road, and they gave that money to us instead. In the case of Freystaff, the repaving is much further out into the future. I don't know, 10, 10 years at least?
10, probably, yes.
And how long until Goldendale really needs to be repaved?
That's what he was talking about.
With Goldendale, we're talking about 10 years out into the future.
Okay, so it's Goldendale that is 10 years out from being repaved?
You were talking.
Okay, that's all I got.
And the other thing I would also add that I brought up when we were discussing the roads originally in the first place is Goldendale, basically speaking, I looked at it as three different sections. It would go from Mequon, from Freystaff, Freystaff to Holy Hill, and Holy Hill to 145. But because we did from Freystaff, almost 85% up to Holy Hill, that whole particular road, when you put the sewer and water in there, that's all new. That's good for, I mean, if the state uses the amount of 25, 25 years for that, that whole middle section wouldn't have to be done for 25 years. The other section, as Steve was talking about, basically speaking, would be 10 years on either one of those other two sections.
Question? Is this regarded as a change to the budget, being that you're adding additional funds to the road? The road budget?
This would be a change to the capital budget, yes.
Okay. So it would have to go through approval of the board as well? Because we're changing the budget as it was approved?
Yeah, the capital budget was approved by the village board, and if you're adding funding to the capital budget for the road improvement program, it would have to be approved by the village.
We're not adding borrowing, we're just adding monies to what we're going to be spending. Still a change of the budget? Correct. So that's my question. So it still requires a board approval? Okay, I just want to make sure. We don't have anything on the floor, board. So whatever you want to do going forward here.
At that rate, I will make a motion that we approve the reallocation of remaining funds towards the 2022 Annual Road Improvement to reconstruct or resurface Goldendale?
No, no, no.
Country Air.
Say roads.
Country Air.
Don't pick on tape. It's roads, Dave.
Just put it towards roads and don't make it specific. That way it's...
We don't know what's...
Nothing specific, just roads.
Right. All right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Pretty well had it.
You had it.
Okay, we'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Is that an aye or an nay?
God, it wasn't a aye. Is that...
Aye.
Aye?
Yes, yes, yes.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution of 45-2021 Capstone Development Agreement. Ryan, you got this one, or Steve?
I'll introduce this briefly. This is the development agreement with Capstone Quadrangle related to the development that is being initiated on Holy Hill Road. It incorporates the proposals that we've talked about for the past several months with Capstone Quadrangle, taking on responsibility for construction of the sewer water and roads among some of the other site improvements in the village. Those ownership of those assets will be transferred to the village. The village will, in turn, contribute $2.5 million towards the site development project, cost for the project. And with that, I can answer any questions that the...
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Ryan, you've gone through this. Has there been any revisions back and forth, or is it pretty much boilerplate?
It is largely the standard form document that we have used, with the exception of the language that would be specific to this development. So for example, the incentive discussion would be unique to this. The discussion of the private road, the private road, I guess we'll say, in air quotes, discussion in terms of the maintenance. And then the stormwater ponds being the three main things that would be different than the typical development agreement. And yes, I have looked.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
On this? Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
I'd like to abstain.
Trustee Hudson?
Yeah.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller? Is that an aye?
No.
No.
An o.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Next item under new business is item H, Resolution 46-2021 Election Officials.
Motion to approve new business H.
Motion made and seconded. Do you have anything to add to this, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. This is a normal resolution that comes forward every two years to reappoint the election officials in their terms. I'm very thankful for those that we have on the list. We've got some, what I call, rock star election officials. It really came through in 2020 and 2021, and I'm very thankful for all of their work. In this list, some of the individuals come forward from the two parties, and they are listed before you. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. President? Further discussion, Mr. Knight Rider, or trustee Knight Rider?
I will abstain on this matter.
Okay. Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have three closed sessions listed, and item L, which is not a closed session. We could make a motion to move that up? No? Hold on.
Want to go into closed session to talk about the offers before we come back and do that?
Uh, okay, I see what you're saying. For, for item J. Thank you. All right, then we have three closed sessions as listed. First one reads, Village of Richfield, potential water sewer memorandum of understanding. The village board may enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1, subparagraph E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and may convene in the open session to take such action as it deems appropriate. And item J, acquisition of property in the area of the intersection of Donjes Bay and Wasaki Roads for a new Department of Public Works facility. The village board may enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1, subparagraph E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and then may reconvene in the open session to take such action as it deems appropriate. And item K, Presbyterian Homes, PHW claim, the village board may enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1, subparagraph G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, and then may reconvene in the open session to take such action as it deems appropriate.
I make a motion to go into closed session for items I, J, and K as presented.
And to include?
Village attorney. Do we need the clerk?
No, no, we don't, don't need the clerk. Could use the super, the superintendents of water and sewer, the public works director, the community development director, and for item J, the, the consultant from Grave, who's here assisting the village.
So I'll make, add that to my motion, those people are included, and the clerk
Motion.
Can go home.
Motion made. Do I need a, I need a second, please. Motion made and seconded, discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Myers? Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye. Yes.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, after we go into closed session, we will come back into open session to take care of new business item L, but most likely we will not be televised. And the item L is to authorize village administrator to engage Lers to complete a tax incremental district feasibility study for the area adjacent to the proposed public works facility site. Before we do go into closed session, I just wanted to announce that the next village board meeting will be on Monday, January 17th, at 7:00 PM, and there will not be a village board meeting on January 3rd because of the New Year's Eve holiday. So for that, then, I wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you all for watching. Thank you all for coming, and have a good night. Microphones off, please.